Good evening. Welcome to the school board meeting of St. Lucy County. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I am from the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation, our God, and his will, the routine justice crawl. It is certain all families should know that this is all for the people, and we all surrender, thus no exceptions.
Now we will have Lincoln Park Academy.
Sing as you will, oh singers are, who sing because you want to sing. Sing as you will, oh singers are, who sing because you want to sing. Sing as you will, oh singers are, who sing because you want to sing. Sing as you will, oh singers are, who sing because you want to sing. Sing as you will, oh singers are, who sing because you want to sing. Sing as you will, oh singers are, who sing because you want to sing. Sing as you will, oh singers are, who sing because you want to sing. Sing every good on every bone, ah. Sing every living loving day, sing every living loving day. Sing every song that I hear, sing every song that I hear. Oh, sing, 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 sing as you will, oh singers are, who sing because you want to sing. Sing as you will, oh singers are, who sing because you want to sing, because you want to sing, ah, to sing.
Family members and staff from Lincoln Park Academy who shared this wonderful talent with us tonight, would you please stand so we can recognize you? As you know, this is a school board who's been committed for a very long time to have arts in all of our schools. And so we always start our meeting with children, and then we go on to honor staff and community, which we will do now. After we have our public hearings, we'll go into that. So, we are now ready for our proposed adoption of amendments to school board policies, 7.11 and 9.30 Student Progression Plan for High School Facility Use Manual. Mr. Superintendent?
I recommend the board adopt the proposed amendments to school board policy 7.11, number 930, The Student Progression Plan for High School and the Facility Use Manual as presented.
We have a recommendation for the superintendent. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address any of these policies? Please come forward at this time. Again, is there anyone interested in addressing the policies that are up for vote this evening? If not, board members? We have a recommendation from the superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hilsen?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hawley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five zero. Next, we're on to consideration approval of requests for renewal of charter Somerset College Preparatory Academy. Mr. Superintendent?
I recommend the board approve the request for renewal of the charter agreement with Somerset Academy Incorporated for the Somerset College Preparatory Academy for a period of five years as presented.
We have a recommendation for the superintendent. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address it?
Sorry.
Is there anyone who addresses, wishes to address? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, we have the recommendation of the superintendent.
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Hilsen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Angersall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five zero. Those of you who are here, if you want to be an unscheduled speaker, you need to have the forms filled out to Ms. Harrison before we get to the consent agenda. Your issues will be addressed if it's on the consent at that time. Mr. Superintendent, special orders of business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call up Ms. Cherry Patrick so she can introduce our first recipients.
Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Gent. Under the leadership of Stacy Jacobson, our wellness manager and champion for healthy choices in St. Lucy Public Schools, the district submitted an application and supporting documents for the worksite wellness award for comprehensive tobacco cessation benefits. This award is based upon the Public Health Services Clinical Practice Guidelines for Treating Tobacco Use and Dependence to Effect Cessation Treatments. Here this evening, to present the award and share a few words is Tad Fisher of the Florida Tobacco Cessation Alliance.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Gent. I'm here today to recognize St. Lucy schools for your tremendous work in actually winning our Silver Award for providing your employees with opportunities to quit smoking and better their lives healthy, make themselves healthier. I'm presenting this on behalf of the Florida Tobacco Cessation Alliance. The alliance lead is led by the American Lung Association of Florida and is comprised of comprehensive network of groups determined to improve the health of our state. The alliance works together to raise awareness for tobacco addiction, which is chronic relapsing medical condition, not just a habit or personal choice, and to advocate for the adoption of comprehensive cessation resources for all tobacco users statewide. Part of our work in the alliance is to recognize employers in Florida who are providing all appropriate tobacco cessation medications, including nicotine replacement, and counseling services so their employees have an easier time of quitting. And finally, this is the Silver Award. St. Lucy Public Schools is receiving this Silver Award recognition today. This means your benefits provide complete coverage of five of seven FDA-approved medications to your employees. A minimum of two counseling sessions are offered, at least thirty minutes each, at least one quit attempt annually is covered. That's a fantastic lead by all of you to try to make your employees healthier and their families healthier, and we applaud you. We have a plaque to leave with you, and I know there's several others that wanted to
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Gent, it is with great pleasure that I come before you tonight to announce that St. Lucy Public Schools has thirteen of its schools receiving recognition as model positive behavior and intervention support schools. Each year, this recognition is given to the schools for the work they have successfully accomplished in developing a multi-tiered system of supports during the previous school year. The recognition tonight of our thirteen PBIS schools is for the fourteen-fifteen school year. Our project is in conjunction with the University of South Florida, and each year, those schools are recognized for demonstrating innovative, creative, and functional ways of supporting positive behavioral and intervention supports in these respective schools. The specific characteristics of PBIS model schools and their consistent methods of utilizing data to better serve the students, teaching PBIS to new students throughout the school year, creative and engaging reinforcement systems for students, extending PBIS throughout the campus, and partnering with the community and the parents, and including PBIS into daily activities across all available teaching opportunities. PBIS model schools have made a commitment to both PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions, and the support that follows, and it definitely shows in the thirteen schools that we have recognized tonight. It is also important to note that less than one hundred and fifty schools in the state of Florida are recognized as PBIS schools, and thirteen of them are right here in this district. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Robert O'Neil. Robert, if you'll come forward. He is the coordinator of our PBIS project for the district. He not only coordinates this, but he invests a great deal of his time and effort into working with schools on their respective projects and also on revitalizing PBIS continuously throughout the district. Robert is an integral member of our team. He's instrumental in continued associations with the University of South Florida and works collaboratively with those members to head our local PBIS leadership team. Robert will introduce the schools, and we will ask that you come forward to the middle, please, so that all of the people can receive their plaques and have the pictures made. I would also like to take just a moment to say thank you to the many school psychologists, behavior analysts, and other individuals from student services who work so tirelessly to make this project successful each year. Robert.
Good evening. As I call your name, please come to the front of the boardroom so that you may accept your recognition, and will pose for a team photograph. Our schools receiving bronze status are Mariposa Elementary, excuse me, Morningside Elementary, Oakhamak K-8 School, Palm Point K-8 School, and Village Green Elementary. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. The schools receiving silver status from the University of South Florida include Francis K. Sweet Elementary, Alapatag Flax K-8, Lawnwood Elementary, and Manatee Academy K-8. Thank you. You know, glad you mentioned that, I should've told you. Yeah, I got an email, West half their panel, they're printing the banners and... (inaudible). The schools receiving gold status are as follows. Gold status is granted upon the system of supports that are clearly identifiable at all three tiers, one, two, and three. I would like to ask the following principals and their teams to come forward at this time. Bay Shore Elementary, Southport Middle School, Westgate K-8 School, and Weatherby Elementary School. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. How many were in row, buddy? Platinum, look at a couple of platin. Thank you, thank you for calling.
Hey, Robert, how are you? Good, 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 thank you.
Well, thank you. Karen, thank you. I will answer your email. Thank you. Thank you, thank you for coming, thank you. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Thank you. How you doing? Congratulations, thank you. That's it. Our parting words. schools. Thank you again.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Gent Superintendent, the St. Lucy Ed Foundation is privileged to work with the Aaron Project Foundation. I'd like to ask Vicki Rodriguez to step forward. Vicki, like all of us, wears many hats, but she's here as a board member of the Aaron Project Foundation. She's also on the board of the St. Lucy Ed Foundation. And this evening, we'd like to recognize two projects and grants that we're giving for the Aaron Project Arts and Education Grant. And Vicki, I'd like you to just read this, and we'll call over the two recipients.
Now, you should know better. I have my own thing that I'm gonna say.
Okay.
Not one for a few words. The Aaron Project Foundation is a 501(c)(3) established by the Bochamp family and friends to honor F.K. Sweet, fourth grader Aaron Bochamp, whose life was tragically taken in a bus accident four years ago this month. The Aaron Project has a three-part mission. As part of our mission, we provide scholarships to St. Lucy County seniors to remember Aaron's academic achievements. We've provided over $31,000 so far since our inception, with another $20,000 to be given away this year. That's $51,000, not $5,100, $51,000. We provide custom cleats to high school soccer players nominated by their coaches for the Golden Cleat Awards, in remembrance of Aaron's love of soccer and all things athletic. We've given away thirteen pairs of cleats on the county soccer fields bearing Aaron's number, number two. And tonight, our first arts and education grants will be awarded to teachers or teams of teachers who wish to incorporate the arts into their regular curriculum. We do this to remember Aaron's gift of creative expression through art. Tonight's grants are $1,000 and 300 respectively. The first grand award goes to a team of teachers from Morningside Elementary School led by Gretchen Alsiger. The project Carousel of Arts Touches Spirit Bear will impact seventy-five fifth-grade students, which means that Aaron will be impacting seventy-five fifth-grade students, who will participate in a literature study unit using Touching Spirit Bear as a jumping off point to move through stations where they'll do watercolor paintings, weave a Nato blanket, create a totem pole, and participate in a drum circle. Would Mrs. Alsiger and her team and her administration come forward to receive their award and get thanks from the Bochamp family, Lily and Simon Bochamp? The second funded project was submitted by Melinda Hornsby of Parkway Elementary. The project Parkway and the Arts Night will impact twenty-one students, who will have the opportunity to generate personal and meaningful artwork for display in the Parkway Art Gallery. Ms. Hornsby's students will be contributing original pieces of pottery modeled after their research on Seminole and Native American pottery as part of their study of Florida history. The project presentations will take place next Wednesday on March 16th. So would Mrs. Hornsby and her administration please come forward to receive their award and congratulations? We have to take back the check. Okay. We'll make sure that they get their check to fund their project. Congratulations to all of our recipients, thank you to all of you, and to the many supporters of the Aaron Project who have supported us with donations or participating in our golf tournament. We do a yearly golf tournament at the Legacy, and I just so happen to have some forms, in case there's any golfers in the room, which I know that there are.[1667.01][1667.01](laughter) The golf tournament will be on May 28th, and to find out more about our work, our projects, and the golf tournament, you can go to our website at www.theaaronproject.org. Thank you.
Madam Chair, and members of the board, and Mr. Gent, I'd just like to provide you all with a quick overview of what's been happening with the Ed Foundation over the last seven months. I just want to start off by thanking the board and Mr. Gent for all of the help that he has given me personally over the last seven months, and I could tell you that this is truly a labor of love. When I joined the foundation in August, we had assets of $91,600, and I'm pleased to tell you that as of February, it's grown to $107,600. And the news is just getting better and better. For the month of February, general pledges are up by $5,000, sponsorships are up by $10,000, and payroll deduction, which is all of the help that we get from the school district folks, are up by $1,000 per month. So if that continues, that's an additional $12,000. So thank you, everyone who works for the school district. And also, if I look down the road a bit in the pipeline, the pledges that we have gotten from the private sector not yet paid are over $20,000. So there's more money flowing in during the springtime. On the side of challenges really quick, you know that we're selling the coupon for classroom books. This is a big fundraiser. The schools and the kids have done a fantastic job. We were hindered a bit by the last-minute change in the publisher when they lost Winn-Dixie, and they put in another supermarket that wasn't in our county. So we're down about $17,000 in gross sales, but we've entered a phase two, we're trying to sell more, more books. We're also, just looking down the road a bit, we're starting to work on an annual In doing so, music and music education is important to the curriculum for all students. At this time, I'd like to introduce our dear friend, Ms. Christine Hill, to present the Music in Our Schools Month proclamation. Ms. Hill taught in this district for 28 years. She's a true music educator. She is joined tonight by many of our music colleagues that are here. If you are hearing music teachers, please stand, because I know some of them are also in Vero Beach where the NPAs are going on. Raise your hand and stand if you're hearing music teachers as Ms. Hill comes. Mrs. Hill.[628.29][628.29](applause)
Well, I don't like to correct my colleague, but I've actually been here 31 years, so (laugh) thank you, Dr. Perry. Well, good evening, Chairperson Hensley, Board Members, and Superintendent Jen. I have spoken before you many times on various subjects of importance, but tonight, I speak to you on a subject that's very close to my heart: music. In fact, I stood in this very place exactly 10 years ago today, as a music teacher and an advocate for music, to read the resolution for Music in Our Schools Month. And Ms. Hensley, you were the chairperson at that time. Much has happened in those 10 years, and I want to thank the Board for their continued support of music as a part of a well-rounded education. This is a phrase I've used many, many times to emphasize the importance of music education for all students, and I was very pleased to see it's been used as part of the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, now known as Every Student Succeeds Act. So I was really, really excited about that. Again, I applaud your continued support of the music programs in St. Lucy County and look for great things in the coming years. As I read this proclamation, please listen for the many ways that music enhances the education of our students in St. Lucy County. The proclamation for Music in Our Schools Month 2016. Whereas music is a universal language that speaks to all people, and whereas music inspires is the 2016 theme of the National Association for Music Education, and whereas the study of music contributes to the development of young people through heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, and creativity, and whereas the study of music is basic to a complete education and provides a competitive edge for successful education reform while engaging students in individual and group activities, which develop creativity, problem-solving, and critical and evaluative skills, and whereas music education helps students acquire skills in the production and performance of music, as well as gives them an understanding of history and culture, and whereas music and other arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of the school environment, and whereas music programs should be maintained and improved for all students regardless of their socioeconomic status and their abilities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of St. Lucy County endorses the observance of the month of March as Music in Our Schools Month in St. Lucy County, Florida, as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of music education, encouraging teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. In testimony whereof, the Chairman of the School Board of St. Lucy County and the Superintendent of Schools have here on two subscribed their names in the city of Fort Pierce, Florida, this 8th day of March 2016.[833.94][833.94](applause)
Madam Chair, having an action item, I recommend the Board adopt the Music in Our Schools proclamation as presented.
Board Members, we have a recommendation of the Superintendent. Do I hear a motion? So move to Ms. Holly.
Second.
Second. Second by Dr. Mills. Any discussion? I'll do a favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry's five zero. Thank you, Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. As we continue our Music in Our Schools Month celebration, we'd like to recognize some music students with the Music Spotlight Award for their outstanding performance. All of these students passed a very rigorous and highly competitive audition process, where they were required to demonstrate musicianship, rhythm and tonal proficiency, music theory, and artistic expression. Acceptance to these elite groups is a direct result of the talent, dedication, and musicianship of these accomplished individual students. Participating in these very prestigious and elite organizations is equivalent to a football or basketball team playing in state finals. The difference is, when there can be only one state champion in sports, all of these students were on the winning team. These students all participated in the all-state ensembles. Leila Artley from Southern Oaks Middle School, All-State Honor Band, 7th and 8th Grade.[911.62][911.62](applause) Kyle Matthews from Southport Middle School, All-State Honor Band, 7th and 8th Grade.[916.81][916.81](applause) Rebecca Collins from Fort Pierce Central, All-State High School Women's Chorus.[926.81][926.81](applause) Sabrina Langolles, Fort Pierce Central High School, All-State High School Women's Chorus. The two young ladies from Central are actually at MPA right now, probably onstage as I speak, because they were scheduled to be onstage at 5 o'clock. And from Lincoln Park Academy, Hannah Harris, All-State High School Women's Chorus.[950.00][950.00](applause) We also want to take a minute to recognize two outstanding music teachers who were recognized at the Florida Music State Convention. And in doing so, let me read you some short words from one of our wonderful principals. This year, she says, "I had the opportunity to join Palm Point's elementary music teacher and middle school band teacher at the FMEA Professional Development Conference, Diversity in Music Education, the pathway to lifelong learning and participation. I went solely to support Mr. Hatfield to celebrate the accolades being bestowed upon him. After attending the awards breakfast, I took it upon myself to wander into venues where young musicians were performing, and then decided to attend Professional Development, which embraced the fine arts and connected music to the rigor of academic content. The three-day conference was filled with outstanding clinicians, conductors, technical experts, who were instrumental in making the event a premier educational experience for teachers, administrators, and music students. All participants had a variety of opportunities to interact with renowned musicians and experts, to gather material specific to classroom application, and learn about the topics and issues that provide for excellence in music education. I can highly recommend this conference for teachers and administrators throughout our county." That's Deb Snyder. Mr. Hatfield from Palm Point Elementary, he is receiving the Five-Year Superior Award, which meant for the past five years, his ensembles have made a straight superior when they went to MPA. In addition, in addition, he received the Enrollment Award that states that 46.5% of the 7th and 8th graders at Palm Point are enrolled in band class. Mr. Jason Hatfield.[1061.71][1061.71](applause) Luke Hall, the famed band director at Treasure Coast High School, received the Tom Bishop Award. The intent of this award is to recognize an FBA member who has gone into a band program and turned the program around, making a huge positive difference in a relatively short period of time. The award is for making dramatic improvement in concert and marching MPA ratings from the previous years and growth in the numbers of the band. I know so well, because he called last week wanting some new uniforms. Luke Hall from Treasure Coast High School.[1100.13][1100.13](applause)
of each School Board meeting, because we get to celebrate those individuals within our district who demonstrate exceptional service with a star award. This evening, I would like to begin by recognizing someone in our Personnel Department who was celebrated by a principal, Ms. Lily Beauschamp. And it deals with making sure that we are hiring the right people to be in the right seat for our children. So Jennifer, if you would please come forward, and as I read the information about why you are selected as a star, our Superintendent and Board Members would like to congratulate you. According to Ms. Beauschamp, she says, "I would like to share with you a positive experience that I had when I called Personnel. I wanted to find out what needed to be done to complete the hiring process for an instructional applicant. My phone call was answered with a friendly greeting from Jennifer, and she was prompt in checking with what was needed to move this candidate to the status for hire. After answering my questions, she forwarded the application to the next stage in the process to be cleared for certification, and within 20 minutes, I received an email with the updated status. Her efficiency allowed me the opportunity to offer the position to this candidate, and this resulted in having a certified teacher in a 5th grade classroom sooner than later. After having the customer service professional development, I can definitely say that Jennifer exemplified what we are striving for in excellent customer service in St. Lucy Public Schools." Kudos to Personnel and to Jennifer.[1252.08][1252.08](applause) And we have a parent celebrating one of our bus drivers and our bus aide, Ms. Daphne Anderson and Ms. Trenicia Scott. Could you please come forward?[1266.33][1266.33](applause) From the parent's perspective, she has indicated that since my child is nonverbal, I rely on updates and open communication with Ms. D. and Ms. Scott as needed. Our first meeting was warm and pleasant. I really do appreciate the fact that Mrs. Scott took the time to get to know my son and how to make sure she could calm him down when he gets upset, and then praise him for following through. Mrs. D. exemplifies safety first and has a kind way of reminding parents and students of safety rules while driving and while riding. A positive shout-out to both of these ladies.[1311.33][1311.33](applause) And from those who were working on the Night of the Stars event in regard to facilities and maintenance and our instructional technology staff, Mr. Jeff Diefendorf is not able to be here this evening, but Mr. Gillette will accept on his behalf, and Mr. Nile Gentry from ITS. The Night of the Stars Committee was so grateful to these gentlemen. On the morning of Saturday, February 20th, an incident occurred that caused a power outage at Lincoln Park Academy, which also happened to be the site of our annual Night of the Stars celebration later that evening. You can imagine the concern that set in for the Night of the Stars Committee, but with the quick response from our maintenance and IT teams, along with Fort Pierce Utilities Authority, the power was restored within a few hours, and the celebration went on to become a huge success as usual. We also would like to recognize from River's Edge, a 3rd grade teacher who received these accolades from a parent. So I would invite Ms. Marquez to come forward. Parent has indicated that my son struggles in school, not with comprehension, but rather with actually doing his in-class work. In the past, incentives, in-room solutions, along with prompting, have been somewhat effective, but after meeting with Ms. Marquez, she's taken a different approach to his learning. She's not overwhelmed by the issues, and she gives thoughtful, specific praise, along with methodical coaching, when he isn't behaving or performing well. He has never liked to write, but Ms. Marquez wouldn't accept this. She asked insightful questions and employed some very strategic solutions to decipher why he doesn't like to write. Through these methods, we've learned that he really enjoys creative writing when he receives targeted skill building and has good structure to guide him. When an issue comes up, she takes a step back and addresses all sides of it. Her approach is fair and balanced. I was shocked to find out that she was a new teacher, and she's clearly a deep strategic thinker and a great communicator. I feel like we are a team. Ms. Marquez is an incredible teacher who genuinely cares about our son and all of the children in her class. Congratulations.[1476.11][1476.11](applause) And knowing that the safety and security of all children is our primary concern, Mr. Todd Smith, Principal at Fort Pierce Central, would like to share some positives about Mr. Mark Woods from School Security, who is not in town this week. Therefore, Brian Ruther, Chief of Security, will accept on his behalf, and Mr. George Petra from our Transportation Department. Mr. Smith indicated the quick action of Mr. Woods and Mr. Petra made a huge difference in a student being located safely after it was reported that he did not arrive home when expected. With clear communication presented by Transportation and School Security, Mark and George were able to determine the student's location and assist him in getting home. Mother of the student was very appreciative to all that were involved. So thank you, gentlemen.[1531.42][1531.42](applause) And last, but certainly not least, we had a tremendous event known as the Night of the Stars, in which we celebrate many of our instructional and non-instructional personnel. This is an event that takes many, many hands. And we would like to recognize the entire committee this evening. Kudos to the Night of the Stars Committee. I'll call your names in one moment. We appreciate the fact that you have made sure the ceremony was a huge success for all those in attendance. This team worked diligently for many months prior to the ceremony, as well as the day, to assure that everyone knew their role for the evening. From decorations to live entertainment on the television, each of you played an important part in assuring that the event was worthy of our stars. This was truly a testament of communication and fantastic teamwork. So at this time, would the committee please come up as I call your name? Mrs. Pam Hazelleaf. Mr. Craig Jerome of Media Services has indicated that he wants his team represented. So representing Media Services is Steve Devlin and Octavius Robinson. Mr. Tom Jones. Ms. Emily McNutt. Dr. Kevin Perry. Mr. Henry Santa Brea. She asked insightful questions and employed some very strategic solutions to decipher why he doesn't like to write. Through these methods, we've learned that he really enjoys creative writing when he receives targeted skill building and has good structure to guide him. When an issue comes up, she takes a step back and addresses all sides of it. Her approach is fair and balanced. I was shocked to find out that she was a new teacher, and she's clearly a deep strategic thinker and a great communicator. I feel like we are a team. Ms. Marquez is an incredible teacher who genuinely cares about our son and all of the children in her class. Congratulations. And knowing that the safety and security of all children is our primary concern, Mr. Todd Smith, Principal at Fort Pierce Central, would like to share some positives about Mr. Mark Woods from School Security, who is not in town this week. Therefore, Brian Ruther, Chief of Security, will accept on his behalf, and Mr. George Petra from our Transportation Department. Mr. Smith indicated the quick action of Mr. Woods and Mr. Petra made a huge difference in a student being located safely after it was reported that he did not arrive home when expected. With clear communication presented by Transportation and School Security, Mark and George were able to determine the student's location and assist him in getting home. Mother of the student was very appreciative to all that were involved. So thank you, gentlemen. And last, but certainly not least, we had a tremendous event known as the Night of the Stars, in which we celebrate many of our instructional and non-instructional personnel. This is an event that takes many, many hands. And we would like to recognize the entire committee this evening. Kudos to the Night of the Stars Committee. I'll call your names in one moment. We appreciate the fact that you have made sure the ceremony was a huge success for all those in attendance. This team worked diligently for many months prior to the ceremony, as well as the day, to assure that everyone knew their role for the evening. From decorations to live entertainment on the television, each of you played an important part in assuring that the event was worthy of our stars. This was truly a testament of communication and fantastic teamwork. So at this time, would the committee please come up as I call you name, call your name, Mrs. Pam Hazelleaf? Mr. Craig Jerome of Media Services has indicated that he wants his team represented. So representing Media Services is Steve Devlin and Octavius Robinson. Mr. Tom Jones. Ms. Emily McNutt. Dr. Kevin Perry. Mr. Henry Santa Brea. Ms. Jane Whitaker. And our Star of Stars, Ms. Candace Stone. Mr. Elker Harris was an integral, integral person on this committee, and my apologies.
We always celebrate our students, and we celebrate our staff. We are committed to work as a family, and this is very important, that we are kept focused, and that means that we celebrate those who work with us and work with our children. Now we're on to the CTA report.
Well, good evening. You've seen me in a couple of different roles today, and Chris as well. So I think you've also heard quite a bit from Chris and I today, and tonight, and yesterday. So I think for maybe the first time ever, we have nothing left to say, and we'll leave it at that. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. For those of you who do not know, we work closely together with our union members because it is part of our professional team, and we work together on key issues within this school district. We'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. So moved by Ms. Holly.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hilsen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, we have a recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Gent. Is there any conflict to be reported? No. We have any issue that any of you wants to call, pull for separate vote?
I'd like to pull Consent Agenda twelve point one for separate vote, please.
Separate vote? Anything for separate conversation or discussion? Okay. We'll entertain a motion to accept everything on the consent agenda except for twelve point one at this time. Moved by Ms. Holly.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingersoll. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously, five zero. We do have a standing recommendation from the superintendent, but we do have three unscheduled speakers. So Dr. Mills, before we get to your conversation, we will have our unscheduled speakers come forward. Mr. Arza, welcome back to St. Lucy County. Have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent. You know, congratulations on all the success you guys have had tonight. It, it's not fun for me to be up here in a point of disagreement, you know, on behalf of the Florida Charter School Alliance, as a former legislator here in Florida that passed a lot of the education laws, and I was the Chairman of Education. It troubles me to see that the State Board of Education constitutional officers voted to overturn your decision to deny a high-performing charter. Out of respect to, to Dr. Gent, he did, before the last meeting, tried to work out some sort of a dialogue, but the members of the community felt they wrote a great application, there's no reason for that application to be denied, and a decision was made to go forward and appeal it. What I'm hoping, as a former constitutional officer myself, is every time these decisions are made, they cost dollars, and they're, they're costing taxpayer dollars. And one of the things that I ask you, I saw the community come out last time in droves, wanting this because they think it's a good thing for their community. And then I would ask, who is against this? Like who in St. Lucy County? And I have a lot of respect for this community. Senator Pruitt was a personal friend and a mentor to me. Who's against this? Like who doesn't want this charter school, this high-performing charter to open? And, you know, I haven't seen people in the community come and say, "We're against this," so I have to ask, "Who's against this?" And I would just really ask you, and, and you're, you know, it's, you're right, and I, I, we disagree, but I don't question your intentions, or I don't question your motives. I think you're doing what you think is right, based on the information that you have, and we believe we're doing what's right based on the information we have. I would certainly hope that, I read in a book, that on the way to the courthouse before the judge, if you can reach an understanding, it is always good to reach an understanding. I would hope that you would be open, your board, your superintendent, your attorney, that we can have a conversation on the way to that courthouse and avoid legal fees that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to the taxpayers who elect you and who our constituents are part of. That's the only thing I ask you in a, in a humble way, that we can try to have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arza.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Bill Patterson, twelve ninety-one Coral Reef, Port St. Lucy, Florida. I'm speaking to you this evening, again, as a homeowner, taxpayer, and as the Chairman of the Republican Party for this county for the last six years. And in those positions, but mostly homeowner, homeowner and taxpayer, I'd like to share that I do not have any children or grandchildren, any affiliation with the charter school, other than knowing that this school has been a success. A few months ago, I stood here at this microphone and told each of you, begged each of you to do the right thing and grant this charter school. I said, in closing, that you would be overturned by the State Board, and you were unanimously. And now you're going to go and hire private counsel at more expense to taxpayers to try to shut down a school that nobody wants shut down, except for you. I am very, very disappointed, and if this goes forward, and we, you do hire counsel this evening, and do attempt to close down this school again unsuccessfully, I will be making sure that every voter in the state, in this, in this county, I should say, knows your name and how you voted on this, and I have the means. I have thousands and thousands of followers on Facebook and, and a database that will certainly make it difficult for those of you who are running for election to retain your seats. I'm sorry, but it is just disgraceful to see that this charter school is being stepped on, and I don't understand why. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mary Beth Liptrot?
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Liptrot. I reside at two zero nine one Southwest Villanova Road in Port St. Lucy. And I speak to you this evening as a concerned grandparent and retired Flor, State of Florida school teacher. I taught in Broward County and throughout the state for thirty-four years. I have been thrilled to see the change in my granddaughter's improvement in school and enjoyment of their education. They're scholastically a straight A students at this point, and I want that to continue. I appreciate the dedication of the staff and the principals to assist their student. I have two other grandchildren that I hope would be allowed to attend an A school. I fought hard through the years when I was teaching for school choice, and it was voted into the State of Florida, and I really, really hope that the school board would allow the parents to have choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Liptrot. Mr. Gent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the, the speakers that came forward this evening, as well as those that emailed us during the course of the week, emailed to our board members, and I just want to make a, a couple of brief remarks at this time. The school board, the local school board, not the State Board, is the constant, has the constitutional duty for ensuring that all public schools meet high standards established by the state. Somerset submitted an application to replicate a high-performing existing charter school, and because of that, there was additional criteria that needed to be met. Public hearing was held in September, and the board found that there was clear and convincing evidence at that time that the application did not meet the minimum criteria for approval. Somerset then has the opportunity to appeal that, which they did, to the State Board of Education. Although the school board at the time had many reasons to deny the application, there's four main findings. Number one, does not truly replicate an existing Broward County school. The financial plan does not support the education plan, and there's concern with ESE students not being in the school, or that eighty percent had to be serviced in general, general education courses, just leaving out a large proportion of our students in our community, and other concerns about school management structure. So at the State Board meeting, both sides had fifteen minutes to present to the State Board. At the conclusion of the fifteen-minute presentation, the State Board sided with, with the charter school Somerset and disagreed with where we are. So the next option that's available to the school board at this time is to appeal this to the Fourth District Court of Appeals, and that will be my recommendation this evening. There's been other cases, six cases that I'm aware of, that are very similar in nature that have been appealed and taken to, to a higher level, to a court system, of which too overturned the State Board of Education. We live in a democracy. We have three branches of government for the purpose of oversight, to make sure there's checks and balances. The State Board in itself is part of the executive branch, and the State Board members are political appointees through the governor, which is all fine, no problems with that. But being political appointee, sometimes it brings politics into this, into this arena, unfortunately, in public education, and I wish that we didn't do that. Because of that, I feel that it's in our best interest to appeal this to the District Court of Appeals. This is the judicial branch. I feel that what we really need is a fair and impartial hearing where Somerset Academy can present all of their information and answer questions to the three judges, as well as the school district. There'll be no lobbying, there'll be nobody coming in to try to influence the decision, and then let the, let the Court of Appeals make a ruling that we would all abide by, which was done by other school districts, and as I mentioned, was upheld in two cases. And it just really takes the politics out of this. And then we'll respect that ruling. It's also been mentioned that we will be hiring outside counsel, which we will not be doing. We have our in-house counsel, which will be doing this case, and we do not anticipate any outside cost. And one other thing that I wanted to clarify, that one of the statements that was made up to the State Board of Education was the fact that the school district just recently received a B rating, and it was suggested that if the charter schools were not involved, that the school district would have somehow been a C. The school district received three hundred and eighty-one points. If we took our charter schools out, we would have received one less point, which would still equate to a B rating. On that same note, if Palm Point, which the majority of our budget and the majority of our resources and governance control that school, if they were able to be included, we would have eleven additional points. So I say all that to say this, that charter schools really have no bearing on the school district's grade this year, and in fact, in past experiences that I've had, it's been just the opposite, where it's hurt school district grades and graduation rates. Having said all that, my recommendation to the board this evening then will be to appeal this and take it to the Third, to the Court of Appeals, Third District.
I think we need to clarify that we have, for those of you who have a misunderstanding, we already approved a five-year extension on the high school. So that is not on the table. This is only the middle school. Okay, we have a recommendation from the superintendent. I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Moved by Ms. Holly.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hilsen. Any discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Mills?
Yes. With all due respect to our superintendent, I believe that a lot of this is subjective, and the reason why I say that is because we did certainly decided not to approve, not to grant the charter school the last time. And you were granted your appeal, and, you know, of course, we, as it was stated by one of our speakers, we are wanting to do what is right, and it is very, for me, to be true to myself, I will not, I'm not in agreement to taking it any further, and this has nothing to do for me, politics, I don't care whether you vote for me or not. I care about doing the right thing, and this is subjective. The last time, I really believed it was the right thing to do, because it came back to us from our administration, just way too many denials. But then when you take it to the Board of Education, it's a whole different story. They have approved it. So I, for one, will definitely look to vote to agree with the Board of Education.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Aye.
I was going to speak, but I mean, I'm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Opposed.
It passes three to two. Superintendent, staff reports?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few this evening, and first off, I'd like to, I'm going to be making a recommendation tonight for the Director of Student Services and ESE, and that will be Latonya Green, and Ms. Green is currently in the audience, so I would like to allow her to come up to the front and address the board.
Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Gent, I do have to tell you that I normally would have come with a speech, but the superintendent told me I had thirty seconds, which I knew really meant fifteen seconds. But I do want to say, I am very humble, and I'm very grateful and appreciative for the opportunity. I have to say thank you to Mr. Gent, Dr. Prince, and most importantly, Bill Tomlinson and Dr. Wile for having faith in me, and definitely picking me to be the person for this position. I know I have huge shoes to fill, and that, that is very well-known, as Barbara Castine was phenomenal in her role at the district, but I'm truly honored to serve the district in this capacity, and I look forward to continuing the work that the department has already started, and continuing the mission and vision of our district, and doing what's best for children and our families and communities.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Also be bringing forward tonight, the Executive Director of HR, from Mr. Rafael Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez will be coming on board August, I'm sorry, April the fourth, and at that time, I'll present him to the board for comments and introduce him to each one of you. This past month, I've had the opportunity to visit, each month I'm in schools, but this month was kind of special. I was in three individual classrooms. I was at FK Suite with Mrs. Barbara Bennett, Principal Juanita Wright, and was able to read to the students as part of Black History Month, and had a great time. I think Juanita's still here, and had, and she was in the room as well, and had a wonderful time with the students. I got them all riled up and worked up, and then I left and let the teacher try to calm them down. them down. But we had a good time. And Ms. Bennett's fantastic. Also, on February 29th, I got a chance to go to, um, over to Sam Gaines Academy and visit Sandy Roan. Sandy is a behavioral tech at the school and works with some of our very special students that are on the spectrum. And it was an opportunity to come in and watch her and look at the students and see the, the teachers as well, and I appreciate Sandy giving me that opportu- opportunity. It's, uh, it's, uh, one of the toughest jobs in, in, in the district for the teachers and, and aides that are in those, in the classrooms with those students and working with our, with our children, artistic children, our boys and girls. And it's really, it's just a moving experience. I'm not big on emotions, but, uh, I have to admit, I did walk out of there and had to pull the handkerchief out. And Sandy, I just want to tell you, fantastic job. And then thirdly, uh, last week, I was over at, um, Manatee, Lillian Bochamp School, and had an opportunity to read, uh, Reading in Our Schools Week and, uh, read a Dr. Seuss book. They told me it was the latest book regarding Doctor, or Somebody Goes to the Zoo, and so got to read to a second-grade class, and there was approximately 15 students in there, and I only got one thumbs down, um, from, from one student. And then when I was finished reading, I went back to her and we got a thumbs up. So, uh, they'll be able to celebrate spring break this year, the whole school will, because that student, uh, gave me that thumbs, thumbs up. Ms. Bochamp, you can take a vacation, um, during that time as well. But it is great to go into our school centers and to see what our teachers are doing each and every day. I do visit the schools, I do meet with faculty members, uh, informally to hear what's going on, and I pride myself on them listening, and we have a fantastic district and fantastic folks and employees, and it's just one of the highlights of the day, and encourage the board to come out and visit with me. We've already talked about the Night of the Stars, that was my first one, I thought it was fantastic. Uh, the coordination, the way, the way it goes, it's just like a, a great celebration, and again, I applaud those that made that possible. We just had our 28th Annual Science and Engineering STEM Fair, STEM Fair, and, uh, we had the highest, we had over 200 students participate in that. 14 have qualified to go to the Science Fair in Lakeland, and three have qualified to go to the International Science Fair, um, in Phoenix in May. And so, once we get the results of that, we'll present all these students to the board. And special, uh, congratulations to Paul Reeve, who was the coordinator of that. And, uh, that's a major, major task, and I know the board members were over there as well, some of you were judges. It's just a tough, tough, um, job to do. And then, uh, finally, we did VPK registration, and, uh, it was right here in the board room, and I want to give kudos to the Early Childhood Department, Migrant Student Assignment, Student Services and ESE. Our incoming students came in here, all the little guys, and they had a lot of enthusiasm, all pumped up, and some of the kids even came with their backpacks on, even though school won't start until August. So they're well-prepared. We're also in the process of our open enrollment period for elementary and middle school registration that goes on from now until March 18th. You can, uh, refer to the webpage for other information. And I want to give congratulations to our school board chair, Ms. Hensley, who has been nominated in the Economic Development Council 2016 Leadership Award. She's one of the nominees for that award, there'll be a dinner, yeah, we can clap for There'll be a dinner on, uh, April 28th. We are going to have a table, and would like to encourage all of our board members to join us with that. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jen. Any questions for the superintendent? The item from the attorney? School board members' reports? Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. I had an honor on, uh, Saturday to go to Literacy Council Reading, and I think this is the first time kids read to me, and it was one at a time, and I had a great, great time. It was, it was different, and I appreciate that. Also, I've read at FK Suite with Ms. Bennett and, um, History Month. Kiwanis, we read at Fair Lawn with Dr. Seuss. We thank you for Fair Lawn opening the doors, particularly when the principal's not there, principal's meeting, and trusted us to be there. Um, Science Fair again was incredible. Uh, the school boost this year at the fair, we appreciate all the schools participating. Um, we ran out of room, uh, it's getting, the competition's getting fierce, and, uh, we appreciate everyone participating. Lastly, the Music Man at Fort Pierce Central was a hit. We thank you for the Cobros putting that on and doing that for our community. And lastly, if you know, the county play's coming up and tryouts were the next week. Thank you.
Dr. Mills?
Uh, the, uh, Regional Science Fair and Engineering, uh, Fair was tremendous, as well as the, um, our, uh, history, district history fair. You did a tremendous job, the kids did an absolute phenomenal job. Um, we are truly blessed here in St. Lucie County, uh, public schools with the talents and the abilities that our students have and they show, and with the programs that we have here. I wanted to also say that Night of the Stars were, was, um, real, very special, and every year it gets even, uh, more so. And so, we thank the Education Foundation for all that they do to ensure that our teachers can be honored, um, our, and our other, uh, staff members can be honored, as well as our children, and scholarships. Uh, and so, we really do appreciate the Educational Foundation for doing such a tremendous job, not just with Night of the Stars, but, um, all year long. I also want to thank, uh, the Beechep family, uh, and because of their donations, uh, they actually give a lot of the scholarships to the Education Foundation. And to hear that number tonight, uh, that it's over $30,000 worth of scholarships that are given out from that family, as well as, uh, what is about to happen, I think she, uh, Vicki mentioned, 50, over $50,000 will be given, um, once we, uh, give these scholarships out this year. So, just want to give thanks that way. Um, also, we did have our work session, and, uh, during that work session, it was a very productive one. We, we spoke about alternative education expansion. We have some strategies in place for that. I'm looking forward to seeing, um, increase in that area based on those strategies that were, that we discussed. And, uh, we also had Attorney Dan Harrell, who gave us, uh, um, certification in, uh, education law and, uh, a presentation and understanding the roles of our Florida School Board. Thank you, Attorney Harrell, for that. Uh, it was very enlightening to know even more so. You can't hear enough regarding the roles of the Florida School Board and what our roles are. Uh, we also talked about the legislative executive and, and what they're doing now in the budget area. And, um, at that time, we had an overview of the FEFP calculation, uh, that they were, uh, discussing and hopefully, uh, bring changes in that area. Uh, Speakers Bureau, we have at Sam Gaines as well as St., uh, Fort Pierce Westwood. We had Sheriff Mascara. Ken Mascara came and told his story and, and had the kids captivated at Sam Gaines. And, uh, over at Westwood this month, we had, uh, Matthew Stover, which is the first-year outstanding teacher of 2014. And again, he did a fantastic job. Um, and as well as we had Mayor Ovak that came in. So we are bringing the community in to share their stories to our young people, and they do have our young people captivated. And again, our whole reason for this is so that we can get our children, all of them, to buy into their own education. So we want to thank, uh, those three speakers publicly tonight for, uh, sharing their stories with us. And, uh, went to the Retired Teachers Luncheon, uh, this past month. Uh, it was on February the 25th, and it was a full house. And so, our retired teachers are, and other retired administrators are, uh, growing, uh, their group, and, uh, it was a very enlightening luncheon, uh, for me as a board member to hear, uh, our wise elderly speak. Um, also, I did go to the Reading Council at CA Moore this past Saturday, and that was an excellent program. I believe this is the first year, um, if I'm not mistaken, but, um, it definitely, if not, they're definitely building on what they have done in the past. And then Northport had a Black History Program that I had the privilege of attending. And, uh, we had all of the past principals were there, and they gave the history of Northport. Principal Glenn Rusty, Rusty as himself also, uh, spoke as well. And we also had, um, all first-time African-American people in positions here in Fort Pierce were honored. Um, I, I would be amiss to not mention that, um, three of our very own were recognized in the community on February the 24th. Uh, Principal Juanita Wright, uh, teacher, civic teacher, Sharonda Johnson from Fort Pierce Central, and also our social worker, Nicole Grant, all received honors for their work in the district as well as in the, um, in the community. And that was a very, um, very exciting program as well.
Ms. Holly? Ms. Hilsen?
I've never been publicly threatened by the head of the Republican Party that if I don't vote the way there's an expectation, as we are nonpartisan members on the school board. I have received hate mail and death threats. I had to put an alarm in my house at one point when we did the Get Real About AIDS and my youngest daughter was gone to college, and I was a widow, and I was alone, and I was getting death threats because Get Real About AIDS. People felt like it was a moral issue. And I've worked in churches for 36 years in early childhood education, and right down the street at a Methodist church for 29 years. And I work specifically with children with special need and children that are speakers of other languages. And I had to believe in my heart that we, when we looked at this that came before us, it wasn't just idle, that we just looked at it and said, "This is what we're gonna do." I searched my heart and I felt like there were children's, children whose needs were not being met. And to be publicly threatened is, is a new phenomenon for myself. Politics certainly isn't for wimps, but this shouldn't be about politics, it should be about kids. And I'm terribly disappointed what happened this evening, and I celebrate our community and our children and our school system. Thank you.
Well, unfortunately, it's...[1734.61][1734.61](APPLAUSE). Unfortunately, it's not new territory for me. So, um, it's still inappropriate. We teach our children to teach, treat other people with respect, to treat authority with some level of deference, that you don't make your point by threats, you make your point by arguing your point. It's unfortunate that some adults don't do as well as our children. And I think that, uh, there are lessons to be learned, and most of those lessons come from the adult community. But we do what we know is right, and we go forward. Um, our next meeting will be March the 29th. We are not gonna have you come out during spring break. March the 29th at nine o'clock in the morning will be our workshop meeting, everybody is welcome. And, uh, I have a few reports, but I think I'll hold those for next month. We have no other unscheduled speakers. We are adjourned.